We up and running? Okay, we will call a meeting to order. It's Thursday, January 7th, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or an honorable.
Okay. Any minutes reports received and filed?
Yes, the sheriff's office December 2020 reports are filed and also the auditor's revenue expenditure report.
Okay. We had done our upcoming meetings and everything Tuesday. You got anything new, Mr. Jeff?
Do we have Renegade's Coffee this Friday? I haven't heard anything.
Ah.
Nausea is the one we hear about tomorrow.
That would be, yeah, that would be the second. I don't know, I'll have to check.
Where's that at now?
They're still doing it at Nick's, but there's nothing. You can't even get, you have to bring your own rocket fuel. They don't have coffee there. Because Nick's isn't open.
Coffee with no coffee.
They're not open for breakfast.
Yes.
But they opened the door for us.
Okay.
It was special.
Okay. Harry, you got anything?
Well, civic, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're on the radio.
Coffee, no, it's Zoom, Zoom, Chamber Coffee tomorrow. And then later in the morning, meeting with some stakeholders at City Hall about Prop A.
Okay. And we had our chairman here, he's gone, okay. Commission comments, bids and contracts. Any unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review?
There's no accounts payable. We won't have accounts payable until after the budget's approved.
Okay, and we made a decision. We're going to do the public hearing for the budget, but then we will do the adoption at the end. So I need to open the floor for public hearings on our 2021 budget.
So is now when we're going to discuss any changes we want to make to it? Because this is when the hearing is. After long, we're just adopting it.
This is for the public.
You're not public.
All right.
Is there anybody here who would like to speak on our 2021 budget?
So I could have brought somebody along.
As a member of the public, I think the Collector's Office is underfunded.
How much more you want, Larry?
Anything else? Then we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna, we'll move the adopt the final budget to the end, and we will do the Clark-Dunkland Roundabout Discussion. So we will get.
Oh, David.
Hello, how's it going?
Good.
Good.
I don't see you at breakfast anymore on Sundays.
Well, church time has changed, so we're probably there at different times. So.
I sin, so I go to church really early.
So the topic on the agenda was to talk about Clark and Dunkland, but you've probably heard and seen that on Monday evening, the council did not approve the purchase of two properties that we needed for that project. And so we're looking at that as that project is dead in terms of the roundabout construction. So that's kind of the long and the short of that one. I know there have been lots of discussions, you know, with you guys and otherwise, but it looks like that project, at least from the city's standpoint, is over. But just kind of looking back, I thought I'd reflect maybe on things that we've accomplished and kind of look ahead to things that, you know, we can still be, still work on in this sales tax cycle. So, you know, just a quick review, you know, projects that we have done, we worked on Capitol Avenue. You guys had kicked in some money from the previous sales tax for that one. Myrtle Avenue by Elias, so that was a project that we worked on together. You know, as recall, that was, you know, lowering that whole hillside so we can get some site distance coming out of Swiss Highway. You know, the school at the time also put in the underpaths, et cetera. So that was, I think, a really nice project. Cavalier Drive, so that was over by the new, the new high school. And so that connected from Creek Trail Drive, you know, up to Mission Drive. And so I know that we've had comments, you know, both at this session and other places, you know, concerning how does traffic leave Capital City High School? Do they go back and use Mission? Do they come down to Creek Trail? You know, what impact does that have on Creek Trail and Stadium? You know, we've had traffic studies down there as well. You know, so looking into the future, next sales taxes type of things, you know, maybe that is something that we would like to consider as some improvements, you know, down at that location. So that's kind of a, you know, looking into the future. Morse Packaging Rails Fur, you know, we did, we did that as a cooperative project. The county was the lead on that, and so we got that extended. Of course, then the big one was the Dunkland Street Bridge and Corridor. So with the flood, that took us a little longer to get finished than we had hoped. But ultimately, I think in the end, we've come up with a real nice project there. And I think people, you know, really accepted that well. A project I think was really important for you all, the East High Street Project. And so that project is getting closer to being finished. We're down doing the last bit of sidewalk by Better Lane. And yesterday, we actually went across South Lincoln Street. You know, redoing that to get some ADA crosswalks that we needed and a little bit of sidewalk down towards Grant Street. And then that project will be, you know, finished in terms of the concrete work, and we'll just have to wait till the spring when the asphalt plank gets fired back up to do the final overlay. So that project is very nearly complete. So we're excited about that as well. And so that kind of leaves us, you know, where we are now. We have, you know, had planned on, you know, spending, you know, in the neighborhood of a million and a half, a million eight on Clark and Dunkland. And so that project now is, as we know, it has stopped. And then, of course, we still had a million apiece, city, county, for work in MSP. So that's kind of where we stand with the, with the sales tax projects. And so I don't know if I have anything else necessarily, but if you all had any questions about any of those things, or I'd certainly be happy to answer them.
David, I got a question concerning the church property.
Yes.
Or does that stay?
So we did buy the, as you know, the church property or the property that the church is renting. We actually bought that from the Rappers family. And so it depends on what we want, you know, if we want to do anything at Clark and Dunkland. You know, certainly the roundabout seems to be out. But, you know, since we already own that property, perhaps there's an opportunity to improve the site distance for the eastbound Dunkland folks. You know, it's very hard to look back to the south as you were going eastbound of Dunkland. You know, your site was, the road sort of curves and parked cars in that parking lot and along the street. You know, certainly prevented you from seeing, seeing well at that intersection, which probably led to the creation of that left-hand turn squirreliness there. So since we own that property, I think there is an opportunity to perhaps correct that site distance issue. So if we wanted to go that route, there could be some type of small project there still to do that. But it wouldn't necessarily have to happen. I mean, so, but the intention would be to kind of make that decision on whether or not we want to try to improve that site distance. And then if the answer to that is yes, then perhaps we would, you know, basically keep that portion of the church parking lot that we would need in order for that to happen before selling the remainder back or selling that portion that we don't need to the church if they would still be interested in buying it.
So a decision on that is still kind of on the table. Wait to see where we go.
Correct.
Into your future. The study that was done by, or what seemed to be, identified that there are site distance issues at that intersection.
Correct.
Roundabout improvement, two-way stop, signal where all options they both had. So, but it is a definite site distance issue.
Yeah, I drive that a lot. I, I don't have any, any problems with that. And that parking lot that was Lee's, that's a church parking lot. So usually during the week, there's not a lot of cars parked there. So, you know, I would, if the church will buy it back, I would say sell it back to the church and just, just kind of be done with that. Yeah, I've been talking with Councilman Dave Kemna about Grant Street, and I know Eric has sent us some things on that. If, if we could maybe allocate the money that we had for the roundabout at Dunkland-Clark, I think it would make a lot more sense on Grant because that amphitheater there building is going to, what, be a 2,000-person amphitheater?
I think in the actual seating, that's the right number. But then I think it actually gets up to nearly five.
Yeah, so I think, I think, you know, we're going to have a lot of concerts there and plays and all kinds of stuff. So Grant Street's kind of the same. It's a, you know, it's a residential street that gets a lot of use, so.
Yeah, I was wondering what, what your ideas for that are. I mean, because right now, Grant Street is, there's a 50-foot right-of-way is what we own for Grant Street. The current street is 31 feet wide. And the setback to the houses on the western side, you know, is about 15 feet. So, you know, looking at, you know, and certainly something could be done, but I'm curious if you have an idea of what you're imagining that to be because it, it is going to mean probably purchasing some right-of-way somewhere. And I didn't, you know, you know, I'm interested to know what, what people are thinking about that before we dive into that.
Yeah, I just, I hate to, you know, start our, our campaign for another five-year sales tax and not have spent all of the money. So, but I, that was just something that Councilman Kemna has talked me about.
Right.
So.
And we had, and I think we talked to Eric, you know, we, we had been working with our Parks Department to, you know, to build a sidewalk along Grant Street because there isn't any pedestrian accommodations on Grant Street at all. And so, you know, we had, we were into those plans somewhat, you know, when the conversations began, you know, about is there something else that we need to do on Grant? And so, yeah, it'd be very interesting to be able to sort that out relatively quickly so that, you know, that we could begin whatever that might be, sort of in preparation for, you know, the amphitheater opening. And certainly, one of the challenges of doing something to that street is the creek that comes through, you know, kind of, you know, about two-thirds of the way down. The creek actually runs parallel to the street except above where it crosses the street, you know. So any widening or anything in that location, you know, then certainly we're, you know, quite a bit of impact to that creek at that point. So, but yeah, we'd certainly be interested in hearing folks' ideas as to what they would like that to look like.
Yeah, I'd say you'd probably look at improving the intersection of McCarty. That's an odd skewed intersection. What you do with widening, parking along there, it's probably something the city, county, other departments need to just look at more in depth and see if that's even feasible to do anything, if it makes sense. You know, just knowing what they have going on at Riverside, not only the amphitheater, but Botanical Garden, big complex plans there. It's a, it's going to be a destination that people are going to be going to and access this for right now. Or that kind of traffic. Currently, it's okay.
Yeah, we've talked about that grant project and fully support it too. You know where I'm at on the roundabout. You've probably seen the emails.
I haven't, but maybe your comments from previous meetings.
The emails pretty much reflected that that I sent to the city council as well. So I would like to see that money. It's not going to be used on the roundabout state on the east side, though. So that's just, it was one of the projects that was on the east side, and I think it was one of them that, at that time, seemed like an idea because they were talking about closing down Chestnut. We didn't have the Lafayette interchange and everything and break time was there. So things have changed since then, so I think it's a good one to, you know, hold things up and revisit it, so. It still makes some improvements to, I think it doesn't need to be a roundabout, though.
Site, site distance is bad. I mean, that's really bad there.
If there's cars parked there, yes.
The strange offset left turn, lack of a better term, it's really odd there.
So you get rid of that. I mean, I just, I didn't do it like an engineer does. I did it with a marker, maybe a crayon in the map that y'all had.
Truth be known, we do that too, Jeff.
Let me know, I'll come over. You get rid of that, and then if you, even if you sell the church back, you keep part of that corner and, you know, reduce the price and put, I think Eric had mentioned, you could put an island in there to give you that line of sight there, so.
Your roundabout project had some changes to that already, right? Right, it would just be slightly different. It would probably slight, the, the portion of that property that we were keeping was kind of, you know, kind of an arc. Whereas if we were just trying to actually achieve a site distance issue, it'd probably be a slightly bit bigger triangle. And the other part of that, it's, you know, I don't know to what extent this may or may not happen, but I know the folks at the church are also interested in the property that's to the south of them, which is a residential house there that's not very good repair. I think they're looking at that as the possibility of expansion to do some sort of daycare or something, something. Not for the house itself, just for the land. So in that, that in and of itself would then further help with the site distance issue, you know, because in some ways, the road curves around enough that that, the front of that house actually starts getting into the site triangle. So, you know, so that's an option. There's also the possibility of, you know, reducing the need for as much site distance by slowing the traffic on Clark down. You know, doing that by, you know, some sort of speed table or otherwise, if, you know, if that was ultimately decided. So, I mean, I think there's some options there if the desire is to see something happen. And certainly, this would probably be the best opportunity to see something happen in so much that we already own the property there on the corner, so.
I know the roundabout and everything threw out a need because of safety concerns at the intersection. Those issues don't go away now that the roundabout's not being done. I mean, it's still there, so it's probably worth looking at a little more in depth and see what other options are there that could be done.
Could you give me a little bit of history on the, you know, one time we were going to have three roundabouts within a couple hundred yards or whatever, and now it's, I guess it's zero. What happened to the other two? What, what's the history there?
So back in 2018, we did a traffic study of basically the whole Clark Avenue corridor. So we started up by McCarty Street and went through Hillcrest. And so just looked at, you know, what, what issues. And so I think Jeff alluded to it. Some of them were, you know, Lincoln University-related, particularly with Atchison Street. And then, of course, there were discussions at Dunkland, particularly as they related to the closure of Chestnut. And then, of course, we know, you know, there's a high volume of traffic that's going eastbound on Highway 50 that wants to go eastbound on Elm. You know, and so there's a squirrely, you know, quick right, quick left, you know, to get onto Elm Street. So, you know, looking at all those things, you know, we began to ask the question, is there some sort of, sort of universal fix, you know, or what, what elements could potentially work together through that corridor to, you know, to function well as a unit when it's all said and done? And so, you know, there are a couple of different options that were, that came out of that traffic study. Certainly, they looked at signalization of that, but that got extraordinarily complicated with the ramps and Elm Street and Miller Street, which are so close, we're kind of recreating, you know, some other problems like it, you know, Ellis Boulevard that we don't really like. You know, we're trying to recreate them. So that sort of got, you know, mixed from the beginning. But, you know, looking at the possibility of roundabouts, you know, was ultimately, you know, what seemed to be the best solution, the preferred solution there. And so, so that, you know, that study was done. And at that point in time, it was, you know, if we're building roundabouts at the ramp terminals, then a roundabout at Clark and Dunkland, you know, seemed to fit well into that, into that idea. And so that kind of is how that progressed. It just so happened that as we were beginning to develop plans for Clark and Dunkland, the governor came out with the governor's cost share money. That was a $50,000, or $50 million pot. And back in October 2019, we submitted an application to, for just shy of $2 million of that money to help with the funding of all three roundabouts. So the roundabout, you know, built basically the ramp terminals and Elm Street, the ramp terminals of Miller Street, and then one at Clark and Dunkland. So we were headed down that path. We actually had agreements with MODOT. You know, to get to do that, we actually extended the contract with Bartlett West, and so the design began on those roundabouts. And then in June, late June of this year, due to funding issues, pandemic-related, whatever, the governor's office had reexamined the projects that they had as part of that cost share, and ours didn't make the cut. And so with that, then, the roundabouts at the ramp terminals basically went away again. So that's kind of the history, you know, of the, certainly it would have been, you know, nice to be able to address, you know, the issues at the ramp terminals, you know, Elm Street, you know, the Elm Street side in particular just because of that strange, that heavy movement from eastbound 50 to eastbound Elm.
Well, the only way that really would make any sense if you still put the roundabout there. I've talked to Councilman Lester and some of the others. You've got that alley that runs behind, runs parallel to Clark Avenue that comes out on East Elm. And other than the Scuba Adventure that juts out, and I think there's a, I don't know if that's Frank Shrimp that has a parking lot on the other side, but you could make a nice wide entrance there and have East Elm come out in the roundabout and just close off East Elm there. And that would, that would really, really help. But with, you know, the city council deciding not to buy those two buildings, then to me, it's, 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 we're done, so.
Yeah, and Councilman Lester had talked to us about that a little bit. And so we did sketch some of that out before, you know, last week and see what that would look like. And, yeah, it probably would have been a little unexpected for drivers, you know. Basically, they're, they're coming a block to go back a block, but it, you know, it, and it did have some, some impacts, but, you know.
It would have been a lot safer, though.
It probably would have, probably what we had ended up with was perhaps a roundabout that was just a slight bit larger in diameter and would have a fifth leg. So that Elm Street leg would have tied in, you know, separately from Dunkland, but in any case.
Yeah. Well, you two work and see if you can come up with, with a project to still use our, our sales tax money on.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Right, so, I mean, that's, you know, that is, you know, certainly something we can do. And of course, in some ways, it dovetails into the, the need to come up with a project list for the next sales tax, you know. And so in some ways, those discussions are somewhat similar except for one of those projects would probably happen sooner. And so, you know, I know at the city level, there's, of course, you guys are ahead of us, you know, six months ahead. And so are probably sensing the need for that to happen more quickly. It doesn't seem like, I mean, we've begun talking about it at the city level, so I'm sure there'll be some discussions further about that, so.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks, David.
You got you.
Thanks. Okay, 911 Service Board Grant.
This is that grant that I was telling you guys about. I know we've been talking about it. It's a grant through the state. By the statute, we are the pass, we're just a pass-through for the PSAT or JCPenney. It's, I can't remember which is 63,000 or, Jefferson City passed it two nights ago, I think, or three months ago. So it doesn't cost us anything. It's just, like I said.
$61,570.
So it's just a pass-through. We're just a pass-through for it. What it is, what's it?
We just did an application today. Is that what it is?
What's that?
We just signed the application today. Is that what it is?
Yes. And so when it goes through, this will pay for the interface between us and Boone County. So if the 911 system goes down, it'll transfer. Boone County's doing the same thing to the, transferred to us since we're comparable in size as far as the 911.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to sign the inter-local agreement between the City of Jefferson, Missouri, and County of Cole, Missouri. The Missouri 911 Service Board Winter Grant Application and Funds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. EMS computer desktop purchasing.
So you wanted to go last?
I wanted to.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for sticking around, Brian. We would ask that you consider the purchase of some computers for EMS. We, several of our computers are getting some age on them. We would like to put one computer at every station so that we're able to do basically a video conference between, so our medical director would be in bi-weekly to be able to do a conference with the on-duty crews. It's not easy to bring everybody in, obviously, because we leave the rest of the county uncovered. Plus that with COVID, we've tried not to bring everybody together, obviously. It, this, these computers, along with the printers, there's a quote here for six computers, six printers. And you'll also notice in here, there's a quote for some video conferencing here. This would give us web cameras so that our computers that are compliant, we'd be able to update those and use those as well. So the ones like Matt's office, my office, the training office, and so on and so forth. There is a device in here so that it would be put in the training office so that they could do trainings, and it could be broadcast to the other stations. Prices are all here in front of you. It's $57.65.88 for the computers. It is $996.36 after we subtract the tax for the printers. And then additional, the, the video conferencing gear would be $5,036.47. We would ask this be considered so that we can do a better job of serving our citizens.
Are all of these things on state contract or cooperative somewhere?
Yeah, the computer stuff is all state contract.
Coming out on their capital, then?
Well, I thought it was a total of 6,000, so I had it added in the budget, but it sounds like it's more than that, so.
Closer to 7,000, it looks like. $57.65.88, $996.36. Is the same stuff that was emailed to us?
Should be.
I think with our new medical director, I mean, we need, we, we need to do this.[1704.72] It's...
Well, he'll be able to come in and teach, and it's, it's as close to face-to-face as you do again in the county and everybody in Jefferson.
And I think with COVID, this is probably better, so...
Did I see an email that, uh, mentioned the computers on Windows 7?
Yes, we have some computers that are still on Windows 7 in our organization that are not supported.
Do, do we have that issue in other areas, Brian?
Not that I'm aware of. These are actually computers that are located out at fire stations and stuff like that that are not necessarily supported by the county, but I guess they'll provide them, so...
Okay. But they're also not supported by Windows, if it's Windows 7, right?
That's what I meant by not supported, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If Brian keeps this going, but yeah, it's not supported by Windows.
I'm fine with it.
Did Kristen get an answer to the, uh, on contract, or what, where do we...
Yeah.
Yes.
The computer equipment is on contract.
Okay.
The video conferencing here would not be, the, the computer equipment is...
I'll make a motion to, uh, purchase the equipment per this, uh, these schedules.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Then we will go back to, uh, adoption of final budget for 2021, and we have to vote to approve three MOU agreements with the different department contingent on them signing the agreements themselves.
So I have three MOUs?
Okay. One with Judy, one with, um, Locke, and one with the sheriff. Your writing's terrible.
My writing's perfect, sir.
Okay.
Sort of.
So we have an MOU with Judy for two part-time employees through the Recorder of Deeds Fund pursuant to, uh, Section 59 dash 319, RSMO. Commission agrees to accept into its general revenue account an appropriation for 2021 of monies from the Recorder of Deeds Fund for the purpose of funding two part-time employees and a Recorder of Deeds office. The employees shall each be paid $19 per hour, which includes benefits up to 1,000 hours annually and not to exceed $38,000 annually. Transfer of funds from the Recorder of Deeds Fund to County General Revenue will occur in December 2021. If monies from the Recorder of Deeds Fund are no longer available, or if the position becomes vacant or is no longer needed, this agreement is null and void, and a renegotiation of this arrangement will be required. So that is an MOU, uh, with our Recorder of Deeds.
Did you read up to a, I'm sorry, did you read up to 1,000 hours to include benefits? Is that...
Which includes benefits.
She will pay the social security, so the taxes and things on that, that amount, it's not benefits.
It's not, it's not retirement, it's not sick leave, it's not vacation.
No, they're part-time employees.
Okay, right.
So we'll do that after the budget, though, right?
You gotta do needs first because then they're in the budget. If you don't sign them, they need to come out.
I'll make a motion to adopt the memo, MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with the Recorder of Deeds Office.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Then we have, uh, MOU, funding of one full-time employee through the prosecuting attorney's statutory funds pursuant to Section 56 dash 312 dash 2, 559 dash 1000 dash 4, and 570 dash 120 dash 5, RSMO. The Co-County Commission agrees to accept into its general revenue account an appropriation for 2021 of monies from the Prosecuting Attorney's Delinquent Tax Fund or Administrative Handling Cost Fund for the purpose of funding one full-time employee in the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. This employee shall be paid $81,600 salary plus benefits and a cell phone allowance of $720, for a total of $105,400 for 2021. The transfer of funds from either the AHCF or PADTF to the County General Revenue will occur in December 2021. If money from either the AHCF or PADTF are no longer available, or if the position becomes vacant or is no longer needed, this arrange, agreement, arrangement is null and void, and a renegotiation of this arrangement will be required. And this is from our prosecuting attorney.
What does, uh, PADTF stand for?
The AHCF is Administrative Handling Cost Fund. And then the PADTF is Prosecuting Attorney's Delinquent Tax Fund. How you like that?
I don't know, it sounded like you were spelling the whole thing out, so...
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry, I was just laughing about it.
I'll make a motion to, um, sign the memorandum, Memorandum of Understanding. Covers, uh, the language you just recited.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Then we have one more MOU from the, I can't read what his name is, Co-County Sheriff. Funding of one full-time employee and partial funding of one full-time employee through the Sheriff's Revolving Fund pursuant to Section 571 dash 101. The Co-County Commission and the Co-County Sheriff agreed to transfer into the Law Enforcement Fund monies from the Sheriff's Revolving Fund for the purpose of funding one full-time employee and partial salary and benefits for another full-time employee in the Sheriff's Office for assignment to processing concealed carry permits. The salary and benefits, benefit and payment for 2021 totaling $63,726 are as follows. Full-time employee salary, $40,886, which includes benefits. Full-time employee partially, partial salary, salary, $22,860, which includes benefits. These amounts include the cost of living adjustment for 2021. Transfer of funds from the Sheriff's Revolving Fund to the Law Enforcement Fund shall be executed upon signing of this agreement. If monies from the Revolving Fund are no longer available, or if a position becomes vacant or is no longer needed, this arrangement is null and void, and a renegotiation of this arrangement will be required.
He's doing a good job, let him go. Makes it easier on notes.
I offer a motion, uh, to execute the Memorandum of Understanding pursuant to 571 point 101.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we will go back to the adoption of our final budget. So, do we have some discussion?
Where do you want to start? I think yesterday you were asking about, first off, I'll start the economic development part of it. And your question yesterday was, we've got 150 in there for equal people, the JCR EP stuff, right?
Yes, you have a total of 150 for that and then lobbyist.
And then 30 for the professional services for lobbyists, right?
It's 120 and 30.
It's 120. 120 for, okay. So the contract with the lobbyist that we had was 5,000 a month. So we're only gonna do it for six months? Okay. I just think if you're gonna do it, we need to do it all year, because I don't think that it stops June 30th.
Right, we have a, we're on a month-to-month as well, right, for...
It's an annual contract.
It's an annual contract.
Well, it's, it's a non-existent contract at this point.
Right now.
Well, currently, we don't have it, but in the past, it's been a 12-month contract.
Right. Right now, we don't have anything. But the agreement on the last contract was 5,000 per month, or if you just wanna say 60,000 for the contract. So you only have 30 in here, so if you're gonna stop it at the end of June, I just, I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense.
I don't know that it was set in stone that it was 30 for that. It was a total of 150. So I think you need to decide what amounts you want in there. It was a total of 150 for economic development and a lobbyist. If you want it to be more than that, we need to update it. I don't think it was set, it just in the notes, I had 30 in one and 120 in the other.
So last year, we had that amount in there.
We were paying 120 for both services at the moment.
Yeah, 120 in there last year.
And we updated.
Now we're bumping it up to 150.
Correct.
But how is that gonna be split out then? So, you figure out what we want to do if we're gonna do that, or just to the end of June.
So if we add an extra 30, what does...
You add an extra 30 to the budget.
Which would permit, uh, a 120 and a 60?
Yes.
120 going to, and, uh, is it, is it agreed? It's going to the new entity?
I don't think that decision has been made. I think it was just a placeholder for economic development at this point.
Got it, all right.
Because there is no current agreement.
We have no contract for that yet either.
True.
We can't have one until it's appropriate.
Well, I know.
Victory Group, I think that was month-to-month. I think that was the agreement, it was month-to-month with them, and basically, we could terminate it pretty much any time, or once we got the regional economic partnership going, so. And they were fine with it, too. And this was, that's part of their deal, was they, they say that's what needed to happen, so. But as far as the lobbying goes, we're gonna get a contract with them, or whoever we're gonna do it with, and figure out if that's gonna be enough. Because I don't wanna come up in June and say, well, we gotta make a budget adjustment. Do it, do it right now if we're gonna do it? And then I think they were asking for 185, so is that what was decided to go 120 for the JCR EP?
I think for right now, yes. Or was it 150?
I, I don't think a hard number was established. Uh, we, we listened to their presentation. They requested 185, which was, the city has appropriated for them. They were gonna raise 370 that way, and another 300 from contributions or from business and the general public. So we listened to their, their request. We haven't made a commitment, and we're about to, with a budget, appropriate.
And I think really concerning the fact, we, we gave nothing to them last year, uh...
Well, we gave something for that function last year to another party.
But again, it wasn't, yeah. It wasn't. So basically, the question is, do we wanna add another $30,000, uh, to that and just have it done?
This may be too deep a dive at this point, but at some point, I think we should discuss the, the lobbying contract, when it starts and when it's, when it ends. It, a calendar-year lobbying contract does not really correspond with a, the fiscal year of the state, nor the legislative session of the state. It's really kind of a, a warped, um, calendar when you look at three different entities, our own calendar year, the state's fiscal year, and the legislative session. And, uh, I think the start and stop at some point, and maybe not today, at, at some point, the start and stop of a lobbying contract should more closely resemble the start and stop of a legislative year.
We could allocate 60,000, but we've got the first six months, and then before the first six months is up, discuss it, because that would, that would close, come closer to following the, the...
I'm okay with, with doing that allocation, although I don't wanna, I hesitate to get below 120 for the, the new entity for the economic development.
Yeah.
So which means adding 30 to the budget.
I'm, I'm okay with that. We're gonna have to adjust court order for changes made today, so you just tell me that that's what you wanna do, and we will make those changes. It's just what we have printed is what's currently in the budget.
Well, I'll, I'll put that out there. I don't know if we vote on individual adjustments here, or we agree.
I don't know that, maybe we should at this point, I don't know.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna propose that, uh, the, the budget be increased by $30,000, uh, so that the breakout will be 120 and 60.
But that's not necessarily saying that we're going 60 to the current lobbyist, is what you all were saying. We were basically good with going the first six months with them and then looking into how we wanna do it later on. And then also, is that gonna allocate that 120 to JCR EP? Or are we going to give them a certain amount and then maybe pay more later on on a tiered payment on money that they raised? Because I've seen letters, but I've not seen any money raised yet from them. There's people that are, you know, letters of commitment per se, but nobody's writing any checks yet.
So I'm gonna propose another option.
Okay.
So you could leave it at the 30,000, sign a contract to get us through this legislative session, hopefully the 30, if the 30 would get you there, and then sign an additional contract at a point in time that makes more sense for an extended, like, through the session. And at that point, you could move money from contingency for the new contract, depending on what that timeline looks like.
I, I like that idea. I would also, I don't know how, how deep we have to get into this, Jeff, but, uh, I would like to see that our perhaps quarterly payment to the economic, the new entity is contingent upon their outside funding, not from the city, but from the business community.
So I think that's something in the contract that we could negotiate.
I think we're paying a quarterly...
But, but you know, they...
The chamber, we were paying quarterly.
Their presentation indicated it was their desire and hope and dream to raise 300,000. I would say our, our one, where are we now? 1, 120? Our 120 is contingent upon their 300. If they raise only 100, we would only contribute, uh, one-third of the 120.
So we're gonna have to come up with some specific language to put in that agreement, you know, like what you all want, what your expectations are, like percentage for each quarter?
Our cumulative percentage. You know, if they make the 300 in the first quarter, then we're set for the year. We're gonna, we'll fund it for the year. Once they reach the 300, we've, we're committed to 120.
So I think you could put languages there that...
But, and paid quarterly.
I can't, I just wanted to sit down and talk about it and hammer it all out.
So we're gonna leave it at 150?
It's up to you. I think, I think if you want to talk about changing the timeline of the contract for lobbying services to go along with the session better, you could leave it at 30 and try to see if that will get you through this legislative session, and then sign an additional contract later in the year for the next legislative session. So at that point, when you sign the second contract, you could move from contingency the amount that you need for that, because it's going to cross over most likely the end of 2021 into 2022, if you go the actual legislative session.
But the big thing, December is when it pretty much starts kicking in.
Right, so I'm saying you could sign an additional contract in September, October, for the next legislative session. Get what I'm saying? Let's move the time of when you sign that contract from being in January to being right before the legislative session starts.
Like December 1?
Actually, it'd start before that.
I was gonna say, probably.
A month or two, probably October 1.
October is when I was thinking.
So there'll be an appropriation at the end of the year, and then January 1 is still gonna have to be another appropriation?
Not necessarily. If you sign that contract to be the length of the legislative session, that open purchase order for the encumbrance would carry over into the next budget year. You would have to cover what you would have to sign the new agreement again in October, but...
In advance.
In advance, but that, yes. So that's an option, if you...
Well, we'll have to see what they're willing to do, too.
I just guess I had two purposes. Number one, make sure we got... I just guess I had two purposes. Number one, make sure we got money in there for them before we're going to do it all year long. And then number two, the one twenty in there for the JCREP is actually just in the budget under economic development. It's not, it's not said we're giving a full one twenty to, so we're not cutting the check today after the budget's done.
I don't think either of these options are set in stone as to what the dollar amount to each one is because you don't have a contract for either one at the moment. So that's why I'm saying it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for those types of services. The breakdown itself is not set in stone yet.
But once we would exceed the, the one fifty.
Yes.
We do a budget adjustment?
Yes, you would have to.
Alright.
But if we see that happening, then go ahead and budget for it. If we don't use it, then it just goes back. So.
So that's, that's the decision. If you wanna add the thirty now or if you wanna wait and see what it looks like later?
Otherwise, I have the other department heads and collector and stuff up here saying, well, you always tell me you should have budgeted for it.
I'll follow your lead on whether you wanna put the numbers, the full numbers in there now, Jeff, or, or you want to.
Yeah, I'm.
You're, you're a bit adverse to budget adjustments.
A bit. I think it just needs to be put in there if we foresee it happening.
Okay.
And the way I see it, it's gonna happen, so why not budget for it?
So add the thirty thousand to economic development.
Then I'm fine with that.
So. And I've, I've still.
Do we need a motion for that?
We didn't make a motion on any other changes, so.
Okay.
I think.
Okay.
Understood.
Other changes?
I'm still against the, adding all these positions that we're adding. Think we're in the time when we don't know what's gonna happen and we're adding people. And Mike Shepherd, he said when he had his last meeting is we need to take care of the people we do have. So we're, we've got maintenance that is three down right now, four down. We can't fill them positions. There, there's TV advertisements for companies down the road that are paying seventeen dollars an hour. So we're not gonna get anybody for what we're paying. So I think we need to be taking care of, you know, positions like that. We do need a, we do have to do the marshal because we got another judge, so that goes without saying. So I'm fine with that position. The human resource, I think we need to have, but I think the other four, we need to hold off on. And one of them was another maintenance person and I don't think we included that in the budget, so I'm gonna be holding off on those three. And we had some raises in there for, you know, certain people too. I think y'all agreed to raises for everything they asked. I'd be fine with doing maybe a portion of them. So. That would be my proposal is just having those two positions. Marshal and human resource officer and then I'd have to look at what the raises, what I think we had. Four thousand on a couple of them.
Any other changes?
All of them?
Yep.
Just for the, for the individual ones we did.
It's every line that changed from my budget tiers. So you can go through each salary line.
We might be a while.
I, I sat through all the, the budget meetings and I thought there were good, good arguments, good documentation as to why we actually needed six additional employees. But the discussion took it down to five and I would, I would still stay with those five. The, the two that you mentioned. There's a health position in there. There's a prosecuting attorney position. And there's a, there's help in your office, right, Kristin?
Correct.
The auditors. So I, I believe those other three are as valuable and needed as the two that Jeff mentioned.
Yeah, I, I agree with Harry. So. You know, we. County government keeps growing and.
Don't have to.
It doesn't have to grow?
Nope. You don't have to keep adding people. These are gonna be costs that you're not gonna be able to get rid of. It's not a one-time deal. We can take care of the people that we do have. We've had offices that have reduced some staff and worked with, worked with the money and they took on added duties and gave them more money. So then to, to retain and to recruit, we're gonna have to be able to pay the ones that we do have already budgeted. So. I think we got a lot of other offices that are probably watching, listening here today that are gonna tell you, well, I need more people too. So next year, we're gonna probably have about thirty people being asked for. So.
We haven't really added a lot in the last few years. This is, and I think the health department definitely needs that, that individual.
Well, just cause we haven't added people don't mean we need to. So, I just don't think they're needed right now. That justifies adding them in this time. And I'd really like to see something done with our maintenance, otherwise we're not gonna even have.
I think we need to sit down with Greg and we need to see how we can kinda reorganize maintenance, cause you know, I.
We reorganized maintenance last year, three candidates. So like what Jeff just said, I'm seeing McDonald's and all Jeffersons three guys out there hiring a twelve fifty. Target fifteen bucks yearly, nineteen something with benefits. But the Lakers having a hard time finding employees in their new place. I just don't know where everybody is. I've had zero applications since we've had it in the paper, on our website. And I don't, I've talked to people. I don't know where everybody's at supposedly unemployed, although I'm fully got applications for jobs.
Now, Corrections was in yesterday too and they're doing a, a job fair too and.
What are they doing today? I also have a booth.
I've got it at the store. I, and I had Director Presife in the store last night and we were talking. She, she. But yeah, it's, it's, it's everywhere. So, you know, we're probably gonna have to increase your salaries and. Yeah.
I don't see it's gonna have to up again, but I don't, to what, to be competitive with everybody down. You're probably looking at two dollars, three dollars across the board.
Well, I'm okay with the five that we added and also the, the salary adjustments, so.
So we're gonna give some of them a ten percent raise. Are you fine with that?
I, I didn't bring any changes to this meeting. You know, I will repeat that the five people and, and the numbers that were discussed at the various budget meetings, I'm okay with those.
But we're not gonna be able to take care of maintenance. If you wanna take care of maintenance, now's the time to do it, get it in the budget.
Well, you know, maybe if I was sitting in the center chair as presiding, I'd say let's, I would have had, I would not have cut the maintenance person out. Now, it appears that we've, we're, we're acknowledging his issues or not his issues, the department, the department's issues, and I think we can address those during the year. And there's some, there's some extra part-time dollars in there, weren't there, Kristin?
These are, these are budget issues that we can address now before we approve the budget is the way I see it though. Adding another employee for maintenance isn't gonna help the fact that we're four down right now. We can't hire people at twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour when they're hiring seventeen dollars down the road.
Thirteen fifty.
So.
Yeah.
Thirteen fifty if whatever.
Yeah, yeah, like you said, they're still hiring fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty bucks an hour. I can't beat that.
If we're not doing it, let's do it now, not in the middle of the year. We've done other adjustments in the middle of the year. It drives me nuts doing them, then we've done them across the county. So we did it for maintenance. We've done it for ambulance. Did it for, we did it just for the jailers. Was it patrol and jailers?
Patrol and deputy into.
So we could steal them from different neighboring counties.
Those are not steal.
Oh, that was my word.
I, I don't think that we have the information that we need to make that change today. Unless you know what dollar amount you're wanting to go to. I mean, I don't know that you have the information needed to, to make that change today. The budget is a living document. It does change during the year. There are unexpected things that come up. I think that Greg's situation has come to fruition in the last week or so.
We're adding, we're adding all these other people and it's gonna take away sources of funding for what we could do for maintenance, which I'm just using them as an example right now because it's the one that's in the most need. So, but I guess we'll find money later on then.
Well, I had suggested to Greg, I think a maintenance one is fourteen fifty and I said just, just hire them at fourteen fifty. I mean, it, it's, yeah, thirteen fifty is not.
It's gonna get down to the point, what building don't clean? Getting to that point.
They will get that point.
Three thirty every morning to work on two buildings myself. And my other guys are doing other buildings too. So it's getting to the point, what, we're not gonna get clean.
I mean, we're asking everybody else to fasten their belts and suck it up. And here we are. We're just gonna keep adding to it. We're just gonna make this pig fatter. So. I'd rather put lipstick on it and try to, try to make it look better. So, I don't know. It's not getting out cheap, but I just think adding people, now's not the time to be doing it for sure. I can sit there and filibuster all day. I got a meeting I won, but it's down in Osage City, so I'm not crazy about that. You might be getting me out of that.
It's too cold, too cold to play golf, so I'm here.
So, I just, I just don't think adding those positions right now is a good idea and I don't think some of them full raises that were talked about. Cut back there too.
I'm good with including those positions and, and the dollars that go with them and.
You're still good with it?
I am good with it, yes.
Yeah, I am too.
Should've brought some pie or something to change your mind.
Pie?
Yeah, I knew it'd get your attention. Well. I don't know. Any other requests can come to Sam and Harry. They'll send them to me this year.
I'm good with it.
Alright.
Go with it as a stand.
So I guess the only change then is the equal deval line.
So I will have to redo the information for you to sign.
You said something about we could leave it alone. We don't have to redo the court order. If we do something with it, we could take it out of contingency, which would not be a budget adjustment then.
Right. I mean, you could say later in the year that you have a contract that comes before you that's going to change that. You can move from contingency to that line to cover that contract so you can uncover it. I mean.
I'm all about what, what's within the, the rules, statutes, requirements, and your duties as, as, as the budget officer slash auditor, so.
I mean, I, I think we have other contracts that come up. We can estimate, the budget is an estimate of what we think it's going to be. If a contract comes up during the year or we make a change to a contract that currently exists, we, we have to adjust the budget for that. So if you're, if you wanna change the timeline of that contract, we're going to budget what we know at the moment and we're going to adjust the budget later depending on what the next contract looks like.
Okay.
But if you want to add the thirty thousand, I can do that. It's just some changes that have to be made to this court order.
Okay. I'll just make them since we're planning on doing it. It'd be in there then.
Do you want to vote to sign the court order based on this one change? So that you can sign it after the meeting? This is something, I don't have access to this court order. Debbie has to do it. So it's gonna take a little bit. It's not going to be quick.
Is that the simplest, easiest, and proper thing to do? And if you nod, I, yes, I agree.
I, I would prefer that you leave it at the amount that's in there.
Okay.
If we want to adjust it later, we do it with a transfer from contingency. But that's just my two cents.
I'm, I'm good either way. So.
Fine.
Yes.
So then I have a court order based on the numbers that are currently in the budget. And then once you vote to sign that, there is a letter.
I wanna make a motion too.
Well, okay. Make a motion to adopt court order. Does it have a number?
It should be number one.
Court order number one.
I will second.
I don't like it and I tried to change it.
I know.
I'm sure it's not vote for it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose?
Nay.
Okay. Can I read this letter?
Sure.
Okay. This is dated January seventh, twenty twenty-one. Elected officials and department heads. The commission has finalized the twenty twenty-one budget. This is the financial plan for Cole County for twenty twenty-one. All projections for both revenue and expenses were made using generally accepted forecasting methods. At best, growth will be modest with an increase in sales tax revenue. The final revenue and expense numbers for twenty twenty show a change in both revenues and expenses, which influences our budget decision for twenty twenty-one. The budget for twenty twenty-one reflects a sound operating plan for the county of Cole and sound financial planning for our future. The commission continues to believe that a fair and competitive compensation benefit plan is critical to retaining employees of Cole County. The county commission also considers it important to continue covering the entire health insurance premiums and they are continuing to fund the four percent contribution for the county retirement program for the twenty twenty-one year. The commission will also be approving a two percent COLA, some salary adjustments, and one step for EMS employees. The commission are recommending employee evaluations should be performed on all county employees. The commission would also like to ask each department to be conservative with your spending and to look for potential ways to increase fees or find other revenue sources in order to help increase salaries in future years. Cole County government must be conscientious in preserving our good financial standing while also providing the necessary service to our residents. This budget achieves both goals for twenty twenty-one and ensures that we can continue with these goals for the future. In close, please, please find a copy of your budget for the year twenty twenty-one. Thank you for all your cooperation and then it will be signed by all three of us. Do we need?
I don't know that you need to vote. I think you just need to sign that letter. We will get out a copy of your budget to each department. And then Debbie's working on pay forms. They may be coming next week.
Okay. That's all we need to do?
That's all I have.
Okay. Is there anything else before we go into closed session? Now, where is our closed session? Now, make a motion.
Sure. I move we go into closed session pursuant to section six, ten, point zero, two, one of the revised statutes of Missouri. The commission. Commissioner will go into closed session, discuss the following security issues under section 610.021, per N19, closed per N.
Second.
Roll call?
Harry.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
That's from Tuesday.
That's the court order which is...
Keep coming up here, call me, Binger.
Jeff, do you want a copy of these? Do you need a copy of anything else at the moment? Those are just the tables that tell you breakdown by department. The budget book should be up on the website later today or...
Here's our memorandums of understanding and all the other stuff. And then Jeff was...